It is six o'clock. I will call the January twenty-third, 2024 meeting of the With County Board of Supervisors to order. Before we get started, I'd just like to mention and remember Linda Meyer. If you've attended any of our meetings or watched any of our meetings online in the past many years, Ms. Meyer from the hamlet of Spiegel was a constant attendee of our meetings. Although we didn't always agree with Ms. Meyer, we certainly appreciated her dedication and her fortitude when it came to county, state, and federal matters. She passed away after a courageous battle with cancer, and tonight I would just ask that you remember her family and friends in her passing. Now, tonight we have Pastor James Mitchell from the Pioneer Church to provide the invocation. If you would, please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for this day. God, the day that you've given us. God, we thank you for the opportunities that we've been given. And God, we thank you for who you are and what you've done for us through your Son, Jesus. May you receive all the honor. In your word, Paul told Timothy that we should pray for our leaders. And God, we do that tonight, specifically as said in First Timothy two-two, that we may lead a peaceful and quiet life, godly and dignified in every way. God, I ask that you would oversee this meeting tonight and that you would give these individuals wisdom, discernment, guidance, and direction as they discuss and deliberate on the matters that are before them. God, I pray that in doing so, they would serve their community well. God, I ask that you would speak clarity to their hearts and minds this evening. May respect and grace be shown to each individual as they speak and share. God, I ask that every conversation and decision tonight would be righteous and good in your sight. May they benefit and support all people, and may it be done according to your plan and for your glory. It's in the name of Jesus that I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item we have on the agenda is citizens' time. And we had two sign-up sheets. We had one for citizens', regular citizens' time, and then one for a public hearing on the FY24 budget amendment that we had advertised. I just wanted to make sure that everybody that signed up on the budget amendment sheet signed up on the Rock Morning, not for citizens' time.
I might have signed up on the wrong one.
Okay. Gus, you signed up on the one for the budget amendment. Was that correct? Okay. Mr. Music, you want to talk during normal citizens' time?
Yeah, just about the bridge and stuff.
That's what I figured. Come on up. That's why I asked. I've done this a time or two.
Well, I'm pickled to hear what the new update is, but you know, I did contact you before because I did, the Thanksgiving Day evening, there was a contractor who'd come and parked at the bridge, and I got the privilege of talking to him. I figured he was just another lost soul needing to turn around and get directions. But from what I heard and what he had on his paperwork don't really coincide. His paperwork said, and he was out looking at about five or six different bridges for his company to put a bid on. And his paperwork had said that it was for a replacement of the bridge, which that might just be technical terms or whatever for the entire project. But it said it wasn't going to start till 2025. He told me the bid was due in December, and he told me that same word claimed a budget of ten and a half million dollars on his bid paper. But he did not have his blueprints. He had them for every other bridge, but told me he must have ran off and left them on his desk. And like I said, you know, everything I keep hearing, well, they're going to start in April, they're going to start last year. But, you know, I just can't understand why the man that is bidding on the works, paperwork clearly said, you know, beginning date 2025, replacement and everything. You know, I live right at the bridge. And I would still appreciate it if for some reason BDOT would quit moving. I'll move the barriers to the end of Tank Road, and it'll cut down on the people turning around in my field and in my driveway by eight. And, pardon me, I get about eight as many. But then after a little bit, y'all come move the barrels back. And I mean, my mailbox gets knocked over, my post gets knocked over, there's people with horse trailers. And if you just put the sign at the end of Tank Road where somebody knows to go ahead and turn, it will cut down on them. Because minus newspaper lady, us and a couple of people that live behind us or have farms behind us, nobody needs to come up there to chop. So, you know, if you could please move the barriers down to Tank Road, it really does cut down on a lot. But other than that, since I have a little more time, I did get the privilege of reading the newspaper that we're spending another $2 million on the Expo Center for bleachers. And I just want y'all to understand, y'all are not our charles swap. You don't forcefully take money from us to invest in high-risk stuff like cherry bush companies and an Expo Center that we never wanted. And now it's $4 million, and every time I go to an elementary school, they're asking for more donations, more donations, and more donations, which I'm fine with. I don't mind the money going to the schools. But I can't understand how we're dumping another three, four million dollars into the sinking ship of an Expo Center. And, you know, if you want to take money from us, take it and invest it into the schools, not into an Expo Center for us to have hockey and a little bit of ice skating. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Music. All right. That's the only person we had signed up for regular citizens' time, so I'll close regular citizens' time. We'll move into the public hearing for the FY24 budget amendment. Mr. Berry, I'll let you read the advertisement.
Notice is hereby given pursuant to fifteen point two, twenty-five oh seven of the Code of Virginian amendments thereto, the With County Board of Supervisors intends to consider a budget amendment to increase the FY24 capital projects budget, Appalachian Expo Center, and the amount of $2 million. These funds will be used for a new seating system. Public hearing is scheduled for January twenty-third, 2024 at 6:00 PM or as soon as practical thereafter in the boardroom of the County Administration Building, 340 South Sixth Street, Withville, Virginia, 24382, to hear public comment on the proposed budget amendment.
All right. I will open the public hearing, public comment section of the public hearing. I'll call you, and you will have, per our rules of procedures, five minutes to speak. The first person I have signed up is Mr. Mike Forrest.
Tonight, the county administrator, per letter he has in the packet, will be requesting approval to possibly make a loan for $2 million to add for new bleachers, replacement bleachers, to the Apex Center. Assuming this loan is a ten-year loan and an interest rate of five and a half percent, the total payment for that will be $2,604,000. The annual budget, our payment to it, is $260,463. That's a lot of money. To put it in perspective, the money budgeted this fiscal year for Ivanhoe, Bearin Springs, Max Meadows, and rural retreat fire department is only $256,000. That's less money than the loan payments want to be for bleachers. You know, and that goes on for ten years if it's a ten-year loan. It goes to a fifteen-year loan, the interest goes up a couple hundred thousand dollars, and it's just that much more that the taxpayers are going to be paying. I oppose to any additional expenditures for the failed Apex Center. However, since you've already approved that the money to replace the seats, I suggest that the board of supervisors use six million, part of the six million surplus money you have budgeted in the 2024 budget, and avoid the taxpayers having to pay over $600,000 in interest when you've got six point three million dollars budgeted for surplus money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Forrest. Next person we have signed up is Mr. Clay Bush.
My name's Clay Bush. I'm one of three talent here in Withville, and just want to take a minute and share my support for the proposed budget amendment for the Apex Building. I'm on the board of directors for the Blue Ridge Youth Hockey Association, and I've got to witness a lot of really, really cool and exciting things over the last few months in that building. Of course, I'm a big hockey fan, but at the same time, I've gotten to watch all the new hockey fans come out of the woods throughout the county and the community. To me, the only biggest hiccup in the building is the seating. I've heard multiple complaints about that, and I think that this approved budget would solve all those problems. As far as what the facility has done back to the community so far, it's given us a sense of unity as far as we now have something that we can all support together. It's not individual schools, it's not individual anything. It's everybody coming together to support one team, and it's been really exciting to watch that grow and see everything come forth from it. Speaking to one of the schools, the Booster Clubs has been working at the concession stands for the last eight games, they've raised over $3,800 going directly back into our schools, one of our schools, into their Booster Program. With fifteen more home games left, they have projected to bring in another $7,000. That's, that to me is pretty awesome to see that building putting money directly back into our community. The open skates, the stick and puck, the adult pickup games, all those things are slowly growing. The pickup games, we had sixteen guys show up one night, and three of them drove all the way from Johnson City. So, we're pulling, we're pulling people from Johnson City, from Bristol Avenue and Chilahawee, all down to eighty-one. They're driving an hour, hour and a half up here to spend money within our county. I think that the improved seating will help the whole building to thrive moving forward. I think that it has the potential to do so as is, but the seating is, it's lacked thereof. And I mean, we all know that, but honestly, I'm really glad I'm not in y'all's position. You guys have a hard road ahead. But we appreciate everything, and I appreciate you all letting me speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bush.
Thanks, Clay.
Next person we have signed up is Mr. Aaron Foster.
It's funny, I know all of you, but I think it's the first time I've ever been to one of these. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and ladies and gentlemen of the board. I come before the board tonight to request the board approve the budget amendment to fund the seating project at the Apex Center. I believe that having the hockey team at the Apex Center is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to bring something unique to With County that will make the county more attractive to outside business and to help us retain our citizens. Four points I want to make. Number one, I believe having this type of entertainment will help younger people in With County stay and not move away. As someone who graduated from George With in 2012, I'll tell you, large numbers of our graduating classes are moving away to places that have more business and more entertainment. The type of entertainment this brings will bring in those businesses and help us retain our younger population. Number two, it would make the Apex Center more attractive for other shows and will bring people further away to see hockey games. There's a demand for this type of entertainment in the area, not just in this part of the state, but also statewide. Some of you may know there's a bill currently in the legislature to bring the Washington Capitals hockey team over to the Alexandria side of the state, and that would be the first professional sports team of any major sport in the Virginia area that I'm aware of. I know personally people from both With and Pulaski County that frequently go to Roanoke as far as Roanoke to watch hockey games, and likewise, I know people from Roanoke who come down to the hockey games here when the Roanoke team is away. I'd also like to point out there are some folks in the audience from other counties around With County, specifically Pulaski, along with a member of the Pulaski Board of Supervisors that has joined, joined us tonight to be here for this hearing as well. Number three is that between the Bobcats and the Pulaski River Turtles, there is now live sports in the New River Valley for ten out of twelve months of the year. The only months without are August and September. This provides us a constant stream of live entertainment in the New River Valley, again, which benefits our tax base, brings business and entertainment into our citizenship. And while I know the board inherited the difficulties of the Apex Center from the previous boards, and regardless of your position, the Apex Center is something that we now have. It is a completed, partially completed project, and for it to be successful, we must continue to fund it. I'm unaware of any hockey team in any of the five major U.S. leagues that have bleacher seating. This would bring our Apex Center and our hockey team into being uniform with other arenas in the U.S. With all that being said, I would ask the board, please vote yes on this budget amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. The next person we have signed up is Mr. John O'Dell.
My name is Johnny O'Dell, and I own and operate O'Dell's Landscape and Lawn Care, as well as parent and volunteer with the Blue Ridge Youth Hockey Association. I've also served at Mount Rogers Path Youth Crisis Stabilization Unit as a QMHPC certified recovery coach. The reason I bring this certification and experience to light is because I want to address the topic of potential seating from the angle of pro-social activities and options in our region to promote positive behavioral, mental, and physical health, not only for children, but for adults as well. In June of 2022, the U.S. Surgeon General conducted a nationwide study of loneliness in our country, finding that the average of sixteen percent of people feel, only sixteen percent of people feel attached to their community, with sixty-three percent of men and fifty-eight percent of women feeling lonely, with increased depression, decreased sleep quality and immunity, cognitive decline, and more difficult cardiovascular, difficulty cardiovascular. On the flip side, pro-social activities can have positive benefits for behavioral, mental, and physical health, as well as substance abuse by decreasing isolation and providing positive options for our community, especially during the winter when certain types of depressions are higher. The healing effects of community creates a strong sense of belonging and connection, reduction in chronic illness, and increase in positive mental and physical health as well as an increase in socioeconomic effects. All right. So, the what? We're talking about the seating and the why, because the seating, if you've been to a hockey game, is pretty bad. At any, if you go to a football game, if you go to a hockey game, typically you want to be on the fifty-yard line. If you're at center ice at this place, you can't see hardly anything because it's flat. Okay? So, with any investment as a business owner, there comes a time for updates and upgrades, right? So, since this thing has come about, I've been able to be there for open skates. We've had multiple open skates where we've had over a hundred people. We have stick and puck sessions where people can come and they can, we can play without an actual pickup game. We've seen stick and puck sessions with sixteen more people with, has been stated up and down the interstate for sixty miles away. Also, we have the potential for adult and children's leagues, which is what we're trying to do with the Blue Ridge Youth Hockey Association, also with Raffa University. For Jimi Tech, you have a lot of opportunity, and that, that just, I think that that really needs to happen if you've been there. There's no way that it grows. The most sought-after seat is going to be right behind the players. If you're right behind the players at the Apex right now, you can't see anything. So, to go back to my point of community, anytime you have an investment like this, which we already have, I think that we need to have these updates and these upgrades so that we can better utilize what we already have, what we've already invested into. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. O'Dell.
Thank you.
The last person we have signed up is Mr. Gus Kinsler.
Just wanted to come up and say that I had the opportunity several weeks ago to attend a hockey game, and I really enjoyed it. The thing that I didn't enjoy was the seating. But we, I do agree that we do need seating. I do not agree that the county should be the one to fit the bill for it. And I really do not agree with us borrowing the money. As the first speaker stated, it's going to be six hundred, six hundred and some thousand dollars more ten years down the road that we're going to pay in interest. So, just keep that in mind, and thanks for the job that y'all do.
Thank you, Gus.
Thank you, Mr. Kinsler. That's all we have signed up for the public hearing for the citizens' part. I'll close the public hearing. And I guess the next item on our agenda is the payment of invoices. Each board member has received.
Can I speak?
What are you speaking about, sir?
The bridge going into Pope Road.
Okay, we, we've passed that. But come on, come on up. Yeah, you were late. But come on up, I'll let you speak. You've got three minutes.
That's all I need.
How's Pope Road? I was thinking about you the other day.
Yep. That's Roy Cox. I live on twelve sixty-two Pope Road, and I've been trying for years to get that bridge put back in, and they first attempted to put it back in, they hauled the material there, and before you know it, they was hauling it off somewhere else. And then it come up again, and it was denied for some reason. But we really, really need that bridge back in because it's caused a lot of hardship on people above or to get out, go all the way to ninety-four.
Mitch Cox, just the, are you talking about Siling Road Bridge, or are you talking about...
Siling Road, yeah.
Okay. We have two bridges. I don't know, let's, or everybody knows one. Thank you.
Yeah. So, that's about all I have to say, but I really would like to get that bridge back in there. And sorry I was late getting here, but it was a little slow driving, and time slipped away from me, too. But I appreciate you letting me speak, and I just, that's about all I need to say.
How's the pavement? Pavement holding up?
Well, the tar and gravel, it's doing good, but I'd still like to see it blacktop, but I won't mention that.
Well, baby steps.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cox.
Yes, sir. I'm going to try and get out of here. Mr. Cox, if you don't mind hanging around, Mitch Cox, if you don't mind hanging around, BDOT's going to be talking about the bridges here in a little bit, and you can get an update while you're here.
Yeah, I can.
Thank you. John Partridge, Mr. Chairman.
All right. The next item on our agenda is the payment of invoices. Each board member has received in their package a copy of the invoices that need to be paid. I'll entertain a motion to pay the invoices.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Cook. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry. Is there any questions, discussion, or any invoice that any board member wants to pull out? All right. Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item on our agenda is the minutes from our previous meeting from January the ninth, 2024. I'll entertain a motion to approve the invoices.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Burnett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any corrections or additions to the minutes as presented? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
Minutes are approved. Moving to old business, we have some appointments, and based on Ms. Collins's math, I forgot to, I believe that, yeah, that's chair appointments, I forgot to make town and county appointments at our last meeting, so on the town and county committee for, does that mean I need to quit?
Means I forgot. I'm often even stopping.
The town and county committee for the town retreat, I will appoint myself and Mr. Morgan to those positions, and for the town and county committee for Withville, I reappoint Ms. Lawson and Mr. Cook for the town of Withville. We do have an appointment open for a position on the Joint Industrial Development Authority, and I believe Mr. Morgan has a recommendation or an appointment.
Yes, sir. I'd like to nominate, his name just went out.
Aaron Robinson. That's what you told me earlier.
Aaron Robinson.
All right. I have a motion by Mr. Morgan to appoint Aaron Robinson to the JIDA. Do I have a second?
Second.
Was that you, Jesse? Second by Mr. Burnett. Is there any questions or discussion on that appointment? All right. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? He is so appointed. Next is a burn ban recommendation. I believe that is from Mr. Hankins.
Yes, sir.
It's all, I'll speak up.
I thought I was just being loud, sir.
Obviously, we've got snow on the ground, there's no need to keep a burn ban at this point unless, unless I'm missing something, so staff recommends that we go ahead and remove the burn ban we put in in November.
All right. Entertain a motion to cancel the burn ban. So, have a motion by Mr. Morgan, a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any questions or discussion on that one? All right. Hearing none, we'll go do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved. Mr. Forrest, while we're talking about the burn ban, as the, as the chair, I have the ability to institute the burn ban, then we ratify it at the next meeting. Since our meetings in southwest Virginia, weather is odd, for lack of a better word, is it possible that I can, based on staff and fire department recommendation, that if we institute one, that I can cancel it, and then we ratify the cancellation at the next meeting, so we don't have to wait two weeks?
You're not going to like my answer. I would say that depends. I have to look at that a little bit.
Well, that's a lawyer answer.
That's right. But if you, if you're the one institutes it, I think you could probably reverse it the same way, but I'd like to look at that and then get back to you to make sure.
I mean, does that...
It makes sense to do it the same way you created it.
In southwest Virginia, two weeks is, you know...
A long time.
A long time when you're talking about weather.
Right.
Or could, could we authorize the emergency, the EM one, to use their best judgment?
The other option, too, is to maybe adopt an ordinance that talks about burn regulation and then how you institute the emergency, right? Like you, you, the chair and the emergency service coordinator or whoever makes that decision, makes that decision, and that's in an ordinance, and then there's a penalty for that. There was a question about whether, what's the penalty if somebody violates it? That doesn't seem to be very clear, and we could put the penalty in the ordinance, and then the ordinance can set out how you create the burn ban or regulations, and then how you lift them. We could put that in there as well.
And I think, and of course, you know, public safety is always paramount, but, you know, it does cause a lot of hardship, especially with the farmers out in the county who have the perfect weather condition, and they're...
Right.
They're pretty skilled about when to burn, when not to, when they want to do the right thing, but they're caught... When they want to do the right thing, but they're caught in between our meetings.
Right.
Is, is, you know, is the reason I ask that. So if you could research that.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
Thank you. All right, next item on our agenda is we have a presentation from VDOT to Mr. John. I don't want to butcher your name.
Beckto.
Beckto. Give us an update about the Gleaves Road Bridge.
We have a presentation to share today, so if the microphone's not working, I'll try to speak up. But I'll also put a cough drop in just to help with the voice, I guess, for that. But yeah, I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to you today about the Gleaves Road project. It's one, you know, that is an important project to us. I know for a lot of people in the community as well. I know how big of an inconvenience this has been for, for several months for the people who have been having to go around the other side. And just, like you said, public safety is one of the main things that we look at at VDOT as well, and that's one of the main concerns or one of the main parts of this, you know, of what I'm going to cover in the meeting tonight. You mentioned, my name's John Beckto, and I work with VDOT as the district bridge engineer out of the Bristol office. So I give that part of the introduction as well. So one of the things, kind of the overview of what I want to talk about is just to talk a little bit about the history of the structure first, and then try to address some of the four most common questions we get about this project and just kind of help, hopefully help everybody understand, you know, where we're at and, you know, and what the parts are. And then, you know, I'll talk about, you know, Mr. Buzik, you know, maybe a few things that you mentioned earlier in the evening. So the four questions, you know, one of us, why is the bridge closed? You know, how are we going to fix it? Or when is that going to happen? Why is it taking so long? And when will it be open again? So those are some of the main questions that we, we often get for this project. First, on the history of the structure, the Route 619 bridge, it's 128-foot-long trust bridge with a 19-foot-long steel beam approach span on one side. You know, just as far as some maintenance history on it, about 20 years ago, we did some rehabilitation. They put a new wooden deck on the structure. And, you know, about that same time, the stone abutments were repaired. But one of the interesting things is, as some of you probably know, but as we're looking into the projects and learning these things, you know, this is a pretty unique structure, not just with County, but in the whole state and in part of the, part of the nation. It's, was made by the Phoenix Trust Company, and one of the things that, you know, stand that out is they developed this kind of circular, you know, riveted columns, and they designed it right at the end of the Civil War. And in the next about 40 years, you know, they did, they built some 800 bridges similar to this one around the country. You know, over this last 150 years since that time, almost all those bridges have gone out of service and have been replaced. But this is one of the, you know, probably about 40 nationwide is what people estimate as far as these goes. And so, you know, just one of the parts, this is one of, you know, there's two, you know, really historic bridges in the, in the district. This is the most historic trust that we have in the district. And I was asking our environmental folks, you know, do we know statewide? You know, this may be the only one in the state that's still in service. And so it is really a unique structure, and it's something that's really been, you know, it's a neat, a neat thing. I know we've heard a lot from a lot of people, you know, back at the previous meetings and other parts, just, you know, about how, you know, a lot of people come out to see the bridges like that and just see it in those settings, and it just really adds to the community. You know, because of its features, you know, and, you know, basically its history, you know, it's eligible for the National Register of Historic Places, and it's on the Historic Management Plan, which, you know, those are interesting things as well. But, you know, also with some of the historic nature of it comes some different regulations and different things that we've had to go through, different processes we have to go through to make sure that we're preserving those structures and making sure that, you know, they're around for, for future generations as well. So, you know, that's kind of the quick overview of the history. I guess I did skip one bullet on that last one, but it was built in the 1880s for the railroad, and it was moved here in around the 1920s to this location, is what our records show anyway. So again, pretty interesting history of the bridge. You know, moving on to that first question, why is it closed? You are not one of our number one priorities, or really our number one priority is safety and looking at safety of the traveling public. And so just one of the ways we try to ensure safety for public with all the bridges, we have about 3,400 bridges in our district that we look at. And each year, through our bridge inspection program, you know, we go out and have people use bucket trucks, use ladders, use anything they need to, to get underneath and kind of put their hands on all the different components of the bridge to, to look at, make sure there's not any new cracking, make sure, you know, see what the corrosion situation is. And they write up detailed reports for these bridges. And then on the next bullet there is the load rating. You know, they bring that information back, and then they try to determine what's the safe load, you know, that can pass this bridge across this structure. And a couple of things that's kind of interesting, you know, as you, as you think about that, typically, you know, if you see a bridge posted for 10 tons or 20 tons, that doesn't necessarily mean if you drive a 21-ton truck across it's going to fall. But it also considers if we repeatedly drive overload trucks across these things, it's going to do more deterioration faster, and it's going to cause the bridge to go out of service a lot sooner than expected. So, you know, there's two different factors that go into the load rating. The next part on here is kind of thinking about the design of the structure. So looking at this picture, I mean, this is just kind of a schematic so much, so to speak, of it. And, you know, by design, trusses, you know, span great lengths with minimal material, but, you know, the efficiency of material doesn't preside any redundancy, you know, for the loads. So that means that, you know, if any of the trust members or if any of the, you know, floor members, you know, get to the point where they could fail, there's not other parts for the load to go back to the, you know, to provide for those loads, and that can cause, you know, sudden and catastrophic failures. And so those are things we want to try to avoid. You know, on this trust, a lot of the primary members you see at the top, you know, a lot of those diagonals and the vertical members, those are in pretty good shape, the ones that are actually from the 1880s. You know, that's, um, was iron, iron steel, and that's been preserved pretty well. Particularly on this structure, a lot of the problems we've been having is in these floor beams you see. So kind of the way this picture is, the top kind of shows the side view. Right underneath, it's kind of like if you cut, took a slice through there. You know, it's some things that most people don't see as you go underneath this bridge, but there's three beams, and those beams kind of get tied together. And a lot of those floor beams are in bad shape. And so over here on the, to the right of the image, this bridge was built back before they had a lot of the rolls I-beam shapes. And so they were riveted, they took angles and riveted it into plates, which, you know, again, has lasted for a long time. But one of the things, as you can imagine with here, is right at the top of those angles is a place where we can catch water. And, you know, whenever you have water and steel, you end up with, with corrosion eventually. So just to kind of show this in a picture, this is kind of a picture turned sideways. If you were looking under the bridge sideways, looking up at it, you can see those three main beams going across and the floor up above. You know, the trust is up, up on top above these parts, just to kind of get an orientation. But during the inspection in 2022, we've been monitoring some of these things for a while. But during the inspection in 2022, on a lot of these three, you know, these kind of series of beams across here, inspectors found several sections that had quite a bit of corrosion. So I have some of those pictures in here, and these are in two different spots, and we have a few more pictures. But you can see the angles that are riveted to there and where that water's been sitting. And, you know, this is supposed to be, you know, solid steel through here, but you can almost see where a lot of these, you know, the bottom section of these beams are almost to be detached in some of these places over, you know, it looks like they marked in chalk on the thing, 49 inches on that one. I don't see, but you can see the ruler, and the ruler appears to be in the 50s there where that edge was. You know, and another couple of sections, you know, here's another few locations that had very similar type results. And some of these pictures are, all these pictures are coming out of the inspection report. So these are some of the pictures that we'd be looking at to try to say, is this bridge safe to keep open or not? And so as we were looking at, you know, more and more of these locations opening up, you know, the, the concern was, you know, if one of these happened to, you know, break out more, you know, where's that load going to go? What's going to happen to whoever's driving across it at the time? And so, you know, as we, we kind of added all those up into a diagram. And so this was kind of be looking from the top down, and those are supposed to be the three beams. It's not really to scale or anything. But the red spots show areas where we had, you know, basically those types of holes through the, through the trust. And as we looked at that, some of these sections, especially kind of the second one over, had more than 60% or about 50 to 60%, you know, of that bottom part of the beam was detached. And so that became, you know, pretty, you know, pretty concerning. And so at that point was when we, we decided we needed to do something, and we were hoping to be able to keep it open a little bit longer, but we felt like it just was getting to the point where we needed to have that bridge. Unfortunately, we had to give it closed. So that's kind of why it's closed. You know, how we're going to fix it? You know, one of the things that was a positive for this is several years ago, this bridge, you know, I think with the support of the county, was identified as one that needed to be repaired, a priority to repair even, you know, before it had to be closed. And so we were able to get some funding. The, the funding was out in about '26 and '27, you know, kind of like Mr. Buzik said. But we were able to work some of the funding out to get that brought up into, into 2024. And so that's under that project number. If we, if you go on the, some of the websites for VDOT, you know, that would be the number you could look up the project with. But the simple answer is, you know, right now, the, the floor is the bad part. So basically, we're going to go in and, and replace the floor. And, you know, repaint the truss, clean that up where we need to, to provide, you know, to preserve it additionally. But the result of this project should be the removal or will be the removal of the load restrictions from the structure. You know, the trust was originally built to carry railroad loads. You know, there's a little bit of corrosion in different spots, but it still has a lot of capacity left in the trust members. And so once we replace the floor beams, you know, basically we'll, we should be replacing the parts that are controlling the load at this point. So, you know, maybe a little more detail than you need, but, you know, kind of on the left shows the existing situation with those red beams. That's the stuff that's going to be replaced, and on the right side shows kind of the black. You know, in our new beams, or in our new bridges that we build, a lot of times we, and in the same point with this case, we're going to put more, you know, shallower beams in there to help carry the load. So if one of the beams starts rusting out sooner than others, then we don't have to worry about, you know, with three, you really don't have much other chance for that. These will be galvanized beams, so we should have, you know, they should give us a good, long service life with the structure. So why is it taking so long? You know, that's one of the most common questions we get as well. You know, one of the big parts, like I said, this is one of the most historic bridges we have, you know, in the district, and probably as far as we know, is the most, one of the most historic here in West County as well. And with the federal funding that we're using to replace the bridge comes a lot of federal requirements. And so we've been going through that process and trying to obtain those, you know, both to make sure we're preserving the structure in the same, you know, in, in ways that are consistent with their requirements, and, and in order to make sure that it lasts, you know, again, for another generations to, to use and enjoy. You know, another factor is the condition of the structure with it, and as some of those beams in the poorest condition as they are, you know, it's one of those things where, you know, you can't just go out and start demoing or doing different things. We want to make sure we don't, don't compromise the integrity of the structure during the construction. And it's a unique design. I mean, this is the only bridge that we have like it in this part of the state. And just thinking about how, you know, how specific it's not something that was just another plan sheet that comes off the line. It's something, we really want to make sure that we're getting it right. So again, we don't have any issues during construction and that everything moves, moves forward well. You know, one of the things, I know last year Andy was able to come, and Andy Fowler came in and was able to present. And so, you know, I think talking with, you know, maybe you Steven and different things, you know, the project has gone longer, the design part of the project has gone longer than what we expected. Some of that's due to, you know, initially, we were really trying to go with a more aggressive schedule, but sometimes aggressive schedules and federal requirements don't always line up together, and, and we kind of ran into some challenges with that. So right now, we're working to have it, you know, go to advertisement in April, May. You know, and these are more conservative numbers. I think these are kind of the worst-case scenarios, but, you know, that would be construction starting in the summer. Depending on the contractor, they could come in and get the work done this fall, but likely the contract will allow them time to come in and paint because, you know, they can't paint once it gets so cold. So oftentimes, they put that off until the end. But some of that in the May, April, May would probably be either paving or painting. We think the structure should be usable before that time. But just to give you, again, the most conservative numbers at that point. So kind of wrapping up, a few final thoughts here. You know, one, the structure, you know, we closed the structure. We take, you know, whenever we have those kind of situations come up, we, we take that really seriously, and we really think about, you know, what kind of impact is this going to have to the people who live on each side? You know, especially people who, you know, may live on one side and farm on the other. And, you know, in this case, I think it's a 20-some-minute detour around and just trying to figure out how, you know, that's really, you know, really an inconvenience. And so we really take that into consideration, but we also consider, you know, that safety and say, you know, we want to make sure people stay safe, and we also want to make sure that the structure, you know, keeps integrity so it doesn't, you know, have a, have, you know, any more damage than what it is so we can repair it and keep it going. I mentioned the plan has taken longer than expected. Again, some of that's the complexity of working with historical resources and federal requirements. But, I mean, we apologize for some of that, but we are, I do want to iterate that we are, you know, we do have people working on this and trying to move forward as much as we can, as quickly as we can, because we understand this importance. And I guess one of the other parts on this slide, at least, was based on the regulations, you know, we're not able to start physical work until some of those environmental and some of those federal clearances are obtained. And again, we understand, you know, this is a very important structure to us, and we understand it's a very important structure to the community. It's really caused an impact to a lot of people along the roadway, and we are working to accelerate this design to get it reopened for traffic. And ultimately, our goal is to provide, you know, a new, safe, long-lasting structure that, you know, many more generations will be able to use and enjoy, and hopefully be a benefit for, for the county and things that, you know, people can take their kids and their grandkids to, you know, because here it's been in this place almost 100 years at this point, and, and hopefully we can have it where it'll be in that same location for the next 100 years as well. So I think that's the end of my prepared notes, so I guess if there's any questions?
I got one question on it. I mean, as far as the timeframe and all that, I mean, I realize there's not a whole lot we can do about that. But that, the bridge has been out for quite a while now.
Yeah.
And people, and y'all have been here numerous times, and every time you've been here, we've talked about signage and not getting people turned around and getting them down in that road. I mean, we've talked about it over and over and over again. When can you get that fixed so that people stop out at the end and don't go down there or drive a truck down and have to back a dang goose neck all the way back up? I mean, what's hard about putting up signs?
Yeah.
I don't understand that, and it's every time.
No, I appreciate, I mean, I appreciate that comment, and I understand, you know, it seems like that should be on there. I mean, that's something we'll take another look at, and I know that's probably what we said before, but we'll definitely look at that again.
And you talked about federal regulations. I got a phone call the other day, and, and I guess it's the nature of the position. People love to call and give me bad news. They, they never call and give me good news. But, and is part of the delay, because what I was told was that they found some type of endangered or protected species, and that has caused part of the delay. And you, you talked about federal regulations, but you didn't go into detail.
Yeah.
And is that, is, is that part of what's happened?
So, you know, on that, there were, you know, there was a concern that there was some type of aquatic species. I forget exactly, you know, which, you know, what it was in the creek. They did a further, you know, try to eliminate, what that could have complicated in our construction phase anyway would have been, you know, not allow us to put some of the supports we need to in the water and things like that. We had them do a, or they did a further evaluation or further survey or whatever you, you call it. But they found that there weren't any in that vicinity. So there was a, it did add some time to it as they were investigating it. We found that it, you know, that minnow or darter or whatever the fish was doesn't actually live in this part of the Cripple Creek. It's further downstream. So, so in one sense, yes, it did provide some, but as far as moving forward, it shouldn't provide, you know, it shouldn't cause any more, any further delays in the whole process. But you're right, that's part of that, you know, when I was talking about environmental, you know, they look at, you know, there's, there's a lot under that umbrella, and we have a really good group that helps us analyze that. But, you know, a couple of things, you know, where this bridge is as old as it is, you know, there will be environmental, you know, it has lead paint on it, so, you know, when they come in to repaint it, they'll put a shroud. You know, they'll, they'll put tarpaulin around it to try to capture all the, you know, all the paint debris and all those kind of things. So environmental helps, you know, watch for, you know, lead paint or asbestos or any of those types of materials that could be on bridges. You know, the historic piece, they coordinate with the Department of Historic Resources, so they're involved in that. And then also the Endangered Species Acts where we have to work through that. And even, you know, even down in this case, it wasn't a problem because it's not really navigable here. But, you know, they work with, you know, us on, you know, whenever we're crossing a stream, you know, having to make sure that we stay within the core requirements.
Is anybody else having questions about the Gleaves Road Bridge presentation?
No, sir.
Mr. Baer, and, and I'll put this out to the board. And I appreciate the, the presentation, but at this point, my recommendation, I would ask for, you know, board direction for Mr. Baer to draft a letter. for, you know, board direction for Mr. Baer to draft a letter explaining the importance of the bridge, the hardship that the citizens have had to endure, the timeline that we were originally given by VDOT, the timeline that we're at now. Address it to Governor Youngkin, and provide a copy for Delegate Arnold and Senator Hackworth and Senator Stanley, and I'll be more than happy to hand-deliver those next week while I'm in Richmond.
Do you have a motion for that, Mr. Chairman?
I think we can get by with general consensus unless Mr. Baer.
What is it?
And I appreciate, I appreciate VDOT's work, and if we can spur any additional funding through the General Assembly to get it done quicker, I'm sure VDOT won't turn any extra money down.
That's true.
It, you know, unfortunately, people come to us for answers, and we go to you for answers, and it looks like y'all are having to go to federal agencies for answers, so God bless you.
Yeah.
So, does anybody else have anything on the Glees Road Bridge?
It, I assume this schedule is public information now, and our public information officer could share that schedule to show this is the timeframe of where we are, and if there's any bidding delays or construction delays, we can revise that at that time.
And I will, I did, I meant to include or address some of the questions Mr. Buzik brought up. This bridge, you know, was in a group of bridges that was going to be advertised as, you know, as kind of a group, you know, later on, and so we are pulling it, we had pulled it out of that group, and so that may be what, you know, he was going around to look at several different bridges, had a series of them, that might be why he didn't have the plans for these, because we actually had pulled that out of that one, so it would go a little bit sooner than the rest of that group, which was going to be in point five, like we said. So, that may have been that part, and then, you know, as far as the barriers at the end of Tank Road, I have that as well, that we'll take a further look into that and see if we can.
And can you update Mr. Baer with the signage changes or implementation, or whatever you folks come up with? So, I mean, at this point, I'll be honest with you, I've wondered if y'all haven't fixed the problem, somebody has come up there and moved them, because like Mr. Buzik says, what he said makes sense with the travel pattern, but when you go up there, they've been moved. And so, his recommendation, I think, makes sense, but I don't know if VDOT's regulations are different than, I don't want to say, or your recommendations are different than common sense, but it's where we're at.
Talon sets them up all the time, says close signs, local residents own.
They drive wherever their GPS says, now y'all can update the GPS's?
I had a call about that the other day with the Amazon delivery van going through somebody's yard, and I unfortunately had to say, that's, I don't even know whose wheelhouse that's in, but yeah.
The diesel signs were there, they didn't put those up, but nobody reads them. Everyone that turns around in my yard, which is dozens a day, literally say, well, we didn't see the signs. And, but when you put just two barrels on just half the road, on this side of the little bridge at Tank, it cuts the traffic trying to turn around, it gives them a way to turn right there at Tank, and it makes them actually stop and look and say, this road is closed. And now, there are still a few that will drive around them, but it's all very few compared to normal, so.
Well, one thing I've learned is, local, state, or federal, you can't legislate common sense.
Yeah.
They've tried it, but, you know, so, but if you'll just keep Mr. Baer updated, and I appreciate it, so. So next, we have the Silings Road Bridge with Mr. Schwartz.
He said, while I'm up on the chocolate bar.
I believe that's a vote of confidence, so go ahead.
I told him if I survived the first one, I'd be happy to talk about the Silings Road one as well. But yeah, on Silings Road, you know, we happen to have that, Mr. Cox come and speak about that today. You know, that's another project, it was funded several years ago, and so, it was funded for, at that time, future years, and we're getting into those years of the funding now, so the design is starting to work on it. The request that was coming to the board today for that project was, we're wanting to put back, or we're planning to put back, basically, what was there before, which was a one-lane bridge. You know, volume, traffic volume-wise was relatively low beforehand, but it did provide an important connection between Pope Road and the south. And so, one of the things, one of the requirements, just in the process, is that we want to, whenever we put back the one-lane road, one-lane bridge, is it requires a letter from the county just kind of confirming that they are in concurrence with that, that recommendation, because we don't want to go out, I think the process is, we don't want to have, you know, put a bridge in, and then people right afterwards, you know, either say, you know, that there were plans for some kind of development or something else. Now, part of the reasons, part of the challenges, and why we're going with the one-lane bridge is, as you know, that area, it's, you know, it's relatively low, and in the way the angle or the way the road bends right at the end, there's intersection on one side of the creek there, and on the other side, there's a pretty sharp turn. If we put a much longer or wider bridge in that area, we would end up having to impact the farmland, which is right at the end of the bridge, and that's under a conservation easement, we found. And so, you know, that would run into a lot of other challenges as far as, you know, having to replace the area that we would disturb and things along those lines. And so, one of the recommendations we're having is, or we're proposing, is to put back the one-lane bridge, you know, in basically the same area, designed to withstand, you know, to be, if we have a major flooding event, designed to be overtopped. But, but what we're asking the county for at this point is just a, you know, kind of a letter of concurrence. I think we were able to provide Mr. Baer with a copy of one that was recently provided by Scott County, you know, they just recently did that for another project, but it basically just provides concurrence that the county supports or doesn't oppose the one-lane bridge in this location.
Actually, what I received was a copy of the minutes from Scott County, where the Board of Supervisors just took action and voted to approve the replacement of a one-lane bridge with the one-lane bridge.
I'll entertain a motion to direct Mr. Baer to draft a letter of support for the Silings Road Bridge. Have a motion by Mr. Morgan, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry, any questions or discussion? Here none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You'll have your letter. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, without pretend.
Thank you.
And I assume that, the way you talk, we weren't getting a two-lane bridge, so that was the best bet. Thank you. And Mr. Baer, I apologize, this Adobe update, I totally skipped over the Apex bleacher memo, and I did not do that on purpose, but ever since we've had this update, sometimes I get lost, and if y'all don't call me out on it. I knew it was on there somewhere, and I was looking under new business, but I'll let you proceed with that.
Yes, just following the public hearing, which was required due to the amount, should you all wish to proceed, I would request that you all amend and appropriate the $2 million to the $9,470-223. And should you wish to borrow these funds, authorize, authorize staff to proceed with obtaining funding quotes for 10 and 15, if you want 20-year maturities. Obviously, we can get those in, and you can decide whether you want to borrow the funds for it or pull from reserve funds to do the funding, but we would just at least obtain those quotes.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to amend and appropriate the $2 million to
Same move.
Have a motion by Ms. Lawson, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Cook, and I will open the floor for any questions and/or discussion.
Mr. Chair, I've got several questions. It's no secret, I've never been a fan of government doing stuff like this. But we got, we got to do something with it. One thing, before we can make a lot of decisions, we need to have more information. I got your copy of the ticket sales, and if you look at those ticket sales versus $2 million, if we took all that money, we couldn't pay for it, not going to pay for it. That's one of the things that I look at. And the other thing is, we need to have information to this board about what other events, since the ice hockey is not going to be paying, is not making enough money to pay this. We need to know what the other events are, and what they're planning on doing, or I think we do, anyway. So I, until we get a whole lot more information, I think it's hard to make these kind of decisions. And the agreement that you have with the team, does it say that you replace all of the seats?
The agreement does not say replace all the seats, no. The proposal, well, the board of staff put out a request for proposals for options for the seating. This proposal that came back in was not the highest-priced proposal. This proposal maximized the seats in the arena at the most reasonable cost to provide additional seats.
And I would like to see on our agendas, under Old Business, a monthly update on this thing. I don't know if the rest of the board wants that or not, but that's the only thing I would like to see.
I'm beginning for that.
And, Mr. Morgan, and you remind me of the older, younger version of myself back in the day.
Oh, gosh.
I didn't say whether that was a compliment or not, but, and I believe you received the email that Mr. Baer sent out, and I agree with you that, you know, we need to look at, or we need to be informed with what the plans are with the off-season. I had a rather lengthy meeting last Friday with the owner and the fairly new manager less than a month. And I'll just tell you, and I'm a pessimist, but I probably walked out of that meeting feeling more positive about the whole compound than I've ever felt. This gentleman has experience in the music industry, he's got concerts lined up for the off-season. The owner is trying to buy a outdoor amphitheater from, I believe, Winston Salem. But one of the, one of the problems with the whole project is there was never any direction. There was 20 different ideals, and nobody ever got together and said, okay, we're going to take these ideals, and this is where we're going. But he has offered, and he'll be coming to, I don't remember if he said our next meeting, to give everybody an update. And I'm not trying to sell anybody on it, because I wouldn't have voted to build it to start with. But for the first time, and since its inception, there's nobody on this board that voted to build it. Mr. Foster was correct that we inherited it. We tried to sell it. That did not come to fruition. So this plan come up, this gentleman actually had a plan, and we went with it. The key to making money in the event business is putting rear ends in seats, and the key to that is having seats to put those rear ends in. Like some of the speakers said, the only complaint that I've ever received is about the seating, and it was all, I don't want to say half-hearted complaints, but they knew we were doing the best with what we had. I don't like putting that amount of money in it, but to a point that was made about the fair department budgets, that's not entirely correct, because I believe we have one and a half million dollars in the budget to buy new fair trucks.
Yes, sir, and we actually have some money in the budget that's paying for trucks that we've already bought as well.
And since myself and Ms. Lawson have been on this board, and since Mr. Terry and Mr. Smith and Mr. Cook, Mr. Burnett have been on this board, we have taken very good care of our emergency services. They have top-of-the-line equipment, top-of-the-line vehicles. Our school system doesn't want for much. We increased their budget to the tune of, I believe, $800,000 last year, and we've done this, still maintaining the cheapest tax rate in the region. Mr. Foster spoke about a member of the Pulaski County Board, I'd like to welcome, I didn't see who it was. And I don't mean to throw you under the bus, and you could tell Jonathan Sweet tomorrow that I said this. Their real estate tax rate, I believe, is 74 cents.
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three cents.
We're working on it, though. We don't have to be here today, like you got to. You got to pay. You got to apply for them.
There you go. And, you know, you look at what ours is, and I'm not trying to sell anybody on it. You know, several years ago, if you said that, I was even saying this, I would have questioned your sanity. And, you know, it's so bad that Mr. Baer said the other day, said, you know, we may have several people sign up to speak in support of it. And I said, well, for the first time since I've sat in that board, that's never been a fear that I've had.
Very well.
And I don't know that historically, if there has been.
I do not.
But regardless of what people said, we certainly, you know, appreciate them coming out and sharing their opinion, but I certainly understand your questions, and I can only share with you my experience from meeting with the gentleman last Friday, that I was impressed. And impressed and apex project are two words that up until last Friday, I've never put together. So, take what you will with that.
Like I said, we got it, we got to do something with it.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I, you know, I said years ago, I'd vote to sell it in a heartbeat, and, you know, minus the contract we have with Mr. Soskin, you know, if there's enough zeros on the check, I'd vote to not sell it. Unfortunately, nobody showed up with that check.
That's right.
So, but anyway, I'll shut up and let y'all speak your mind.
And, Mr. Chairman, I want to clarify one of my answers. The requirement was not for 3,600 seats. The requirement was not for 3,600 seats or 4,000 seats or anything like that. The agreement did indicate that we would provide additional arena-level seating, and our goal would be to get an additional 1,000 seats. So that is part of the agreement that we have.
Is that what this proposal for seats is for 1,000?
This proposal brings us to about 3,600 seats, is that correct?
This is for about 3,600 seating positions. Some of them are the seats, the vast majority are seats like this, around 3,100. The others are stools, you know, particularly on the press box level, up in the higher level, and then around the glass.
Does anybody else have anything to add?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and everybody in this room knows where I stand. I promised the people that put me in this seat that I would not vote to spend money there until it was making money. Although I'm a huge fan of hockey, I enjoy going there, but I spend my money there. So right now, until it's making money, I'm still a no vote, but I do support the project.
Thank you, Mr. Terry. Does anybody else have anything to say?
No, you pretty much summed it up. I mean, it's been a long six years for Mr. Vaught and I being on the board. I mean, it's...
Long.
It has been wild, just, we definitely inherited the Apex Project. And I feel like we've done the, made the best choices along the way that we could make. It is really nice to see the community impact, how positive it is, and having citizens come and speak. And I love seeing on Facebook all the kids ice skating and, you know, no, it's not fun to have to sit up here and vote for $2 million. I mean, it's not fun at all. But with the options that were presented to me and this board, you know, sell it, take a huge loss, I mean, this was by far the best option. So, no, it's not fun. I would like to just speak real quick on what Mr. Forsett and Mr. Kinsler said, though. You know, if we do have it in surplus, I'm not opposed to getting quotes. But, you know, I do want to have a further conversation about how we do plan to move forward with the funding on it. But I am 100% on board with this hockey project.
Thank you, ma'am. Does anybody else have anything? All right, here and now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Burnett.
Aye.
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 No.
So approved. And I lost my place, Mr. Burnett.
And, Mr. Chairman, if you all find, we will get the quotes and then have a discussion on whether we finance or whether we do reserves or whatever on this. If that's acceptable with everyone.
I certainly expect that you will find the best rate or tell us not to borrow the money.
Well, do we do.
We'll move on to reports. We have the treasurer, and I did not see Ms. Nguyen.
Not here.
Have the commissioner, I did not see Mr. Linkus. Sheriff Foster.
So, you can't visit me. That is, will take a few minutes, I know you got a lot on your plate tonight. I just wanted to thank you very much for the money that was appropriated and approved for the radio project. I just wanted to commend Mr. Hankins and Mr. Parnell, they've been touching base with me. The radios are phenomenal compared to what we've had in the past. We actually took two portals, one in Goyden Fork part of the county and one in the middle of Fort Chisel High School. The clarity of that was just like me talking to you. I just want to tell them I appreciate all the work. I know we haven't got everything completed. He can probably relay to you where we stand, but we're knocking on the door, we're going to get close. And I just appreciate all the work y'all have done on that. Just want to thank the board, too, for the approval of the money that was used to fund it.
Thank you, Sheriff. You have anything to add, Mr. Hankins?
Did B.D.O.T. get the message about the bridge?
Yes. Yeah.
I didn't hear any mention too much about it.
You're good. If anything changes, we'll let you know.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cox.
We'll be a one-lane road.
That's been like the best moments I've been on this board, Mr. Cox. Do you have anything to add about the radio system?
Mr. Chairman, we are working on one last tower. With some of the high winds that we've had lately, it's not been conditions where a tower climber could go and put the microwave equipment up on the last tower. But the tower has been constructed on Henley Mountain. We're wiring in the power. Mr. Parnell is an electrical engineer by training, so he's been putting in the required battery solar systems there to keep that transmitter running off-grid. We anticipate that that work will be done next week. They were going to try to do it this week, but with some of the wind, we, the company has emergencies in other localities that come before ours. So they anticipate that they'll do construction next week. So we should be able to fully test everything by February 1st or early, that first full week of February, so that we can know that it's working like it's expected. We've asked for signal propagation maps from ProCom so that we can go out and test the spots that are expected to be weaker. And if we're getting a signal there, we know that it'll work in the areas where it's supposed to. So I have been carrying this new pager, you funded new pagers for the fire departments as well, so that they don't have to rely just on their radios for that communication. These are really nice because there's a button on them where I can press and replay the last pages. It'll store, I think, 120 or 160 pages. So if I've missed one, I don't have to call into dispatch or call a member of my fire department to see what call I missed. So I think it'll streamline some things on the radio and communications side. They do still have to put in the updated console equipment in 911, but they'll do that as part of the switchover. As the sheriff indicated, we are doing extensive testing. I think the next step, all of the agencies have tested it, and I think the town of Whiffle Police Department probably will be the next step to connect and get them operating. So I don't want to say that we're using them to work out the kinks, but that may be the case. But we are making progress, and hopefully by the end of February, by the end of February, we'll have a lot of the radios in. I don't know that we'll have them all in, just because we have a small staff that'll be doing the installations and the changeovers. But so far, the response has been very good on just using the handheld portable radios. And if we can get that little success with the portables, then we'll be really happy once we get the mobiles in the cars and the fire trucks.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Hankins?
I do not.
Just keep this on your back burner, but at some point, as somebody that has used the county radio system in one form or fashion since about 1996, at some point, and I don't know if you call it ribbon cutting, but at some point, because I never thought I'd live to see us actually have a radio system that performed like a radio system, I would like to have some type of ceremony with the emergency services. The board can tell me if I'm wrong, but I don't think that's too much to ask because a lot of the other old-timers, such as Mr. Kinsler sitting in the back, never thought this would happen either.
If we were right and we got this radio system right, we do want to celebrate, so...
Oh, if it's wrong, I'll have another type of celebration. I've always got that plan.
You got to catch me first, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, moving on to new business, we have the consent calendar. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar. So I have a motion by Mr. Burnett, I have a second. Have a second by Mr. Terry. Is there any questions or discussion on the consent calendar? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item, we have a presentation from Dr. Poole.
We can wait.
I apologize. A little bit later than what it typically is, but as was saying, a little bit later than what they typically are. It's the budget book for FY '24. After seeing the B.D.O.T.'s pictures, I thought someone had slipped outside and maybe taken a picture undercarriage of my truck.
That's just because you're cheap.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Baer, always an honor to come and present to you and discuss what we have going on with the school division. The handout that you have, that is the budget book for FY '24, the year that we are currently in. Unfortunately, again, that's a little bit later than what we had anticipated, but we had to wait until the state and we go through the entire process, and that is the updated information for everything for this year. And as you are aware, we are moving on into FY '25, finish one up and move into the next one. Right now, just what we're seeing, general simply has more bills before them than I think they've ever had as far as the number of potential bills out there. The governor's budget that he introduced has a increase for us as far as the school division. So it looks pretty good. Our LCI actually went down slightly, which means that the state has to pick up a little additional funding for Whiffle County. There were a lot of divisions around us that had the opposite. I know Smith County was one, and they're looking at receiving far fewer state dollars than what we are. Our LCI went down slightly, so that means we are eligible for a little more state money through the local composite index, that's through basic aid, any of the match programs, all of that is based on LCI and our ADN. The budget itself for the state, the governor has put in a 1% bonus, as I'm sure you've all seen. The House and the Senate have something that's completely different. But as we always prepare our budgets based upon the governor's budget, that's what we will do until we see otherwise. As you know, we typically start building with insurance as well, conservatively, we always put a 10% increase in there, and that's served us very well in the past. A lot of times over the past five years, we've been able to take that out. You know, last year was the anomaly, and we had a little over 9% increase, but that's what happens with insurance. One thing that we are looking at for this coming year, and I still have yet to get a straight answer as far as how this will affect us. The BRS rate, what we have always paid in the past, has been a combined rate. So the combined rate that we've been paying is 16.62%. That rate is dropping next year to 14.21%, I think. And that will be Plan 1 and Plan 2 employees under BRS. However, the hybrid employees, of which there are more and more every day, you have an additional contribution from the employer that ranges from 1% to 3.5%. Now, how we calculate that depends on what they put in. So that's going to have a bearing on what we figure on the BRS. We anticipate it will be a benefit to us that we will have as savings, but we don't know exactly how much at this point because it's not a uniform combined rate for all employees. It's going to be dependent upon which plan they are and how many we have of either one. So that's a big-ticket item, as you are aware. BRS is paid on, you know, when you're looking at 16.62%, that's on the salary of the employee. And when you reduce that by 2%, that's a substantial amount of money. But it's not 2% across the board, so how we will calculate that is to be determined. So we're working on that. I'm trying to get an answer, haven't gotten anything yet. But anytime that you're dealing with BRS, you don't always get an answer quickly. Those are some of the big-ticket items and some of the things that we're looking at for the coming budget cycle, just that we know now. Obviously, as you all are aware, things in Richmond change daily at this time of year. So we don't know what's coming out of the House or the Senate. Until we get an idea there, again, the governor's budget is what we always go with. Some of the other things that we have going on, of course, albeit here in March, is what we've come up with, and we'll be farther along in the budget cycle and have a better idea of where we are, what we're looking at from the state. I will say one additional thing with the state money. Right now, as I mentioned previously, the support cap was one big item that came back to us. That was a recessionary, or product of the recession era, where they put a cap on the number of support positions that they paid for. So they reduced that and added three back in, but there are still three additional, and this is support positions per 1,000 students. So they put three back in, and there's still three that they could put in. So that gave us an additional four this year, when that came out roughly $530,000. So if they take the other three out, you're, add the other three back in, excuse me, you're looking at a comparable amount of money. And that helps substantially when you're looking at a half a million dollars from the state. Now, I know you've heard a lot of things about how the funding formula from staff center to student center and the JLR report. So all of those things to be determined. It's not going to happen in this cycle right here that we're in. That's going to be a numbered year or so. We have time on that, and there's still a lot of questions out there about that. I know I didn't give you a lot, but other than cloudy and murky and foggy, but unfortunately, that's where we are right now. Other things that are going on in the school division, obviously the construction project at George Whiff, the new middle school moving along. This week was a little slower than it has been with the cold and the snow. But if you haven't been there recently, it is something to look at right now. It's getting there. Area C, which is the area behind the current cafeteria, where the new kitchen and locker rooms will be housed, they've been working very hard to get that up to deck height because that is going to house the new kitchen. That has to be in place, and they're really pushing to get that under roof so they can get all the materials, all the equipment in there as quickly as possible. The floor has been poured, I know that I mentioned that in previous, the floor has been poured in the dining room. We had problems with the existing floor, that was the old dining room, and the locker rooms in the basement, that has all been completed. The deck is on, and on the gym itself, that's where they have the rest of the roofing material stored. At this time, as they're moving throughout the rest of the building, the steel set decking is going on now. HVAC, electrical plumbing, moving on quickly. A lot of that has been wrapped in, a lot of wires. They're doing well. Little bit of issues with some of the IT materials coming in, but other than that, for the most part, it's been going pretty quickly. Obviously, with the warm weather coming up, there's a big push moving forward, and we're pushing to be in there to start the new school year. Fingers crossed that holds out. Some of these electrical components, some of the switch gears and things, when we first started, you were looking at, you know, 36 and 48 months. And that's since gotten a lot better, but we're still looking at some of these major components coming in into spring versus summer, which is going to be a push for the electricians to get in there, get everything hooked up. But we're hopeful that that is the case. Some of the excellence programs and healthcare excellence, finished up last semester, always positive, gives our students opportunities to go out in the real world, get acclimated, go in and see what is involved. go in and see what is involved. Manufacturing excellence is ongoing now, started last Friday, and that is, that program well received, full capacity again this program. We're very happy with that. And in the past, like I told you, we're focusing on three areas, manufacturing, healthcare and education. Those are three biggest employers in the county. We target those three, give a lot of opportunities for our students to stay here in Wood County and this area. We applied for several grants with other school divisions for teacher prep programs, one in conjunction with Smith County, Carroll, Grayson, Galax, and they were with WCC, Virginia Highlands and Emory, and we applied for another one with Pulaski, Montgomery County, Radford City, Giles, and that was with Radford. So casting our lot, as many opportunities as we can have. We have confirmation back from the one with Smith County and Emory, that that had been approved, and we're waiting to hear back from the one with Pulaski, Montgomery and Radford University. One thing I want to make sure, and I want to thank this board for their forward thinking and their dedication to the students in Wood County with the funding for our substance abuse prevention. As you know, that has been an issue, opioids in southwest Virginia is no joke. That has been a problem and continues to be a problem, and I want to thank this board for what they've done to approve funding for that. We're working with Ms. Belt, Ms. Pendley, Ms. Brown, just met with Cindy Newman here recently to hopefully secure additional funding, and from all indications, that's going to be a go, and that will provide funding, it looks like, for a long time. And we're very happy with that. And some of the things, so Carrie Klein was hired as the prevention specialist in November. She's completed 120 hours and has received her certification, or board certification, to become a certified prevention specialist. She's completed Narcan training, she's met with all the middle and high school principals, met with ninth grade health and PE teachers, met with school nurses and SROs, working with the wellness committee, and participating with the mental health and substance abuse task force with the Withel Land Chamber of Commerce. She's completed threat assessment training, and she's working right now to develop the full curriculum for high school and middle school students in conjunction with the health and PE teachers. So right now, the schedule is there for her to begin instruction with ninth grade students here within the next week or so. So moving along, and one thing that Cindy Newman mentioned, when we had hired her, we had to make sure we had a note with the additional application that it wasn't something that these new funds, we weren't supplanting. So we had to explain that, no, this was a new position, and this would be supplemental funding for this, and it wasn't something that we had in place. So she went back and explained everything, so it feels like we're in good shape there. But again, this is something that is not available to a lot of people. To get her in front of students in Wood County, to have that opportunity, this is a big plus for us and a big plus for the kids. So thank you all for your dedication to this. I'm just trying to hit the high notes, I know y'all have had a long meeting already. Are there questions so far?
Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I do.
Let me finish now. Anybody have any questions for Dr. Poole?
Yeah, I do. Go ahead.
The feed, the lunch program and the breakfast, you still got that? I was trying to find it in here, were we going to feed all of them?
It's free, yes, but we still have to track everything because there's reimbursement that has to go through, so you still have state reimbursement, federal reimbursement, just like the free reduced students in the past, but our percentage is high enough to where it will fund, excuse me, all of them. But we still have to track everything. That's still a separate fund from the general operating fund, that's its own little entity. So, but to answer your question, yes. And that is, we don't see that changing. And in fact, there's a push now at the state level to possibly do that for all school divisions. I know that's in the General Assembly right now, don't know if it'll go through, and don't know how it would affect us, but right now, we're in good shape.
Well, I mean, we started doing it, what, COVID? I just wanted to make sure the money was still there to do it.
It does, and it makes sense, and it's an opportunity, and a lot of kids, and a lot of kids aren't going to eat, but when this takes the stigma away from a lot of it, a lot of those kids are going to eat. And if that's a meal that those kids get, then good for us, good for them.
Absolutely.
Does anybody else have any questions for Dr. Poole?
I think so.
Dr. Poole, you mentioned, I believe you said her name was Wes Klein, the opioid substance prevention specialist that you hired, and you talked about who all she met with, but you failed to mention that she's met with the Wood County Board of Supervisors. And I appreciate that you recognized the forward thinking. I hate Mr. Compton from Pulaski County left, because I've touted to several counties what we did with the opioid money, and all of them are like, man, that's a great idea, wish we'd have thought of that. But we've had no communication from you or anybody about, you've hired somebody, we haven't met her. Me personally, you know, I would like for her to come to a board meeting. We don't know what she's going to be doing. You know, we, nothing.
We hired her on November 20th, so we can make sure that she comes down.
Well, we approved the money in the end of June, and I don't know why it took you that long to hire her, I don't know what the labor market is, but, you know, it's January, and we've yet to meet this young lady and see, you know, which direction this program is going.
Make sure we get her down here to explain what she has been doing.
All right. Does anybody else have anything for Dr. Poole? Oh, and I will say, and I was going to bring it up during my time, but I did, I sat on the, and my brain's locked up, the advisory committee for the technology center.
Perkins.
Perkins, thank you. And Summer Stone, the principal, does a great job up there, and it's a mix of people that work in industry and different areas, and I did mention the job market, and I know this was tried several years ago, Mr. Baer, we talked about the job market with EMS and fire sciences and how hard it is to hire people, and Ms. Stone said she'd be more than happy to put that filler out there to see, to gauge the interest. Of course, they do have, I believe they call it health sciences, they have a really neat program. You know, nursing and health sciences in general has a really high, I don't want to say turnover, but it's like a burnout. People really think they want to be in the medical field, and they go to college, and they get a degree, and they get in there, boots on the ground, and they're like, this really ain't for me. So they have a really neat program that allows young people to kind of, for lack of a better term, poke their toes in the water and get a little bit of experience, and before they start signing up for all the biology classes and everything and get on that career path. It's just, and, you know, with the STEAM program and the whole technology center, it's just amazing what those young men and women do. You know, I do good to hammer two boards together, so anything technical, that just amazes me, but Ms. Stone said that, you know, that is, you know, they would explore that. You know, we talked about, I don't know if there may be any type of grant money out there. I gave her Cody Jackson's name. Of course, Cody's well connected with the Office of EMS, so she may be reaching out to you for more information, but that was just more of a point of information for the board. But if you do get a chance to visit these schools, especially the technology center, go by, any of the principals would love to see you. I know Ms. Stone would love to take you on a tour and show you every program they have up there. She loves to brag on the program and the kids, but anyway, I'll be quiet. It was, it was a good chance for me to interact with people from different industries because every job market that you think is unique to you with finding qualified people and salary demands and the generation we're dealing with, it's not a unique situation. So it spreads the gamut, so, but, anyway, all right. Does anybody else have anything for Dr. Poole?
One thing I would add, and Mr. Chair, I'm glad you mentioned that, Mr. Baer and I have been talking about joint meeting coming up, and one thing we talked about, we have it at somewhere close to George Wiff, where we can do a tour of the upgraded or the under construction building. I have a box full of hard hats that we can all wear over there, and that would be, also would be a good time to go to the tech center, to go see some of the programs that they have, and some of the equipment, what they do in that building, since it's all right there.
And if you haven't seen the middle school, it is, the outline is there, and Brad Hager is more than welcome to take you on a tour, do not wear nice shoes.
I was trying to get warmer weather before I started trying to find the day, but...
And the last time I went, I had to go on a ladder, he didn't tell me anything about a ladder, but I think they're past that point, but, and Dr. Hager is well-versed on the construction aspect of that building, and, you know, he's very impressive, he can point to a piece of conduit and go, you know, that's for fiber for internet, or this is for that. I mean, he's pretty much a walkin' blueprint, I'll give him credit.
He's done a great job.
Yes, so. All right, does anything else for Dr. Poole?
No, just thank you.
All right, thank you.
It's good to see you all, thanks for coming.
Be safe, stay warm. Thank you all.
Move on to staff reports, we have Assistant County Administrator, Mr. Hankins.
And Sheriff, members of the board, the member in front of you for acting tonight for call-out paying, we have funds in the budget every year to reward the four departments under our control for their call-out efforts, they're all belonging here, fire departments, this money goes to those departments, and they can use those funds as they seek it. Some reinforce members for expenses, some pay for training, some use it for departmental The, it has been a year since we have paid these funds out. We have $30,000 in this year's budget, and so I've requested we pay the full $30,000 in the amounts that are outlined. We arrived at these amounts by two methods. We gave them a base rate, so we split $15,000 equally between the four departments. The remaining $15,000 we paid out based on the percentage of calls that they ran for the county, and obviously, Max Meadows has the highest volume of any of our departments. So the requested amounts are $11,500 for Max Meadows, $6,600 for Bearin Springs, $6,450 for Ivanhoe, and $5,400 for Speedville. I'd ask that you authorize us to make the payouts in those amounts and issue the checks this week.
All right, entertain a motion to authorize the fire department payout amounts listed in Mr. Hankins' memo.
Same here.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnett, is there any questions or discussion?
Did they, at one time, were you talking about calls being rolled over to the town and stuff?
Our roll calls have declined significantly for a couple of reasons. On the fire department side, obviously, we're staffing part of Max Meadows' shifts now, so we have the daytime shifts from 8:00 in the morning till 6:00 in the evening, so 10 hours a day during weekdays, and that has meant that we've had to roll fewer calls to either the town of Withel, Ivanhoe or Bearin Springs. So more of those calls are being answered. On the rescue side, you are funding additional personnel for lead mines for a peak truck, 12 hours a day, and at least until those become county operations later this winter. Because you have those two trucks, if you have a call that requires lift assist, they can go to that second lead mines truck before they call for fire department assistance. So you're having fewer rolled calls all the way around, both on the fire and the EMS side.
Yeah, thank you. I love that. Just looking at the numbers, the handle of Speedville seems to be quite busy, Mr. Cancer. Have y'all seen an increase in the call in your numbers?
No, sir, not really.
I just noticed how...
Eighty-seven calls last year.
I just noticed how close the numbers were with Ivanhoe and Bearin Springs. I mean, you don't have 81, 77, I'm sure Max Meadows will give it to you if they can move it. All right, so any other questions or discussion? Here and there, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So approved.
Second thing is, we have an animal shelter agreement with Blaine County that has not been updated in a while. Blaine County does not have its own animal shelter, so they bring their dogs here for our shelter to keep and to feed and to help it opt out. It has been a while since we've updated those terms. We also need to update some understandings because some of the players have changed, so we need to, certainly they've got a new county administrator, so we all want to get on the same page as to how they use that shelter. There are times when our animal control officers are surprised because they use their key to get in, they leave a dog, and we were unaware that a dog was left overnight. So while it has food and shelter, it's not in the warmed part of our facility, so we want to make sure that we're dealing with some of those issues. So I just want to make you aware of the desire to have those conversations, unless any board member has those, I'll initiate those conversations with Blaine County.
Mr. Hankins and Mr. Baer, with the amount of times that our animal shelter has been full in the last several years, is it time to maybe discuss, I mean, we love our neighbors to the north, but is it time to discuss whether it's, we've outgrown that agreement versus the space we have available?
It's certainly, I think, worth the conversation. If you look at, look in the consent calendar, at the information provided by Animal Control Officer Danny Blanchett, you'll see that we had 14 dogs on hand at the beginning of December, and during that month, our animal control officers picked up 43, so basically three dogs every two days, and then the town of Withel also brought in 11, so you had 54 dogs brought in during that time. Now, our staff did a lot to try to adopt those out, and they were successful in getting a lot of animals either adopted out or placed with... a lot of animals either adopted out or placed with the rescues, but at the end of the month, we still had 24 dogs on hand. We have space for 14. We have 14 kennels. Now, some of these, there are court case dogs there that can share kennels. There are some that, you know, came in from the same situation, so they can be boarded together, but it is not ideal to have multiple dogs in one kennel. There are some that you can't control. You know, I think one dog came in and had six puppies. Fortunately, we had a foster that was able to, you know, make sure that didn't happen at our shelter and we appreciate it when fosters and rescues can help out that way. But certainly with some of the capacity issues that we have, there are some changes that we need to make, whether that's with Blaine County, whether we need to look at going to full-time animal care coordinator, which certainly is a request that Mr. Blanchett has advanced with us and we have money in the budget to do that if we want to do that. There are some changes that we need to make. We've also talked about, we've got in our capital improvement plan that we may need to, you know, change our location, build a new facility. You know, the position of most animal control officers is if you build the space, we'll fill it. It's just the nature of how things go with animal control. It's unpredictable. The only thing that you can predict is that there are a lot of people that won't get their animals fixed to where we don't continue to have this problem.
When's the current agreement with Blaine County expire?
There's no expiration on the agreement. There are provisions in there that they can't use our shelter if we're full, but we've had some issues where they go ahead and bring us animals anyway. So, you know, we can revisit that agreement, I think, at any time just because it's a pretty old agreement. I think it goes back over 30 years at this point.
Well, I just don't like having to put out to our citizens that we're full, don't call us about any stray dogs, because we're still taking dogs from another county. And I know they do pay per diem. I assume, is it per dog?
It is. It's a $10 fee per day, so that covers the food. It doesn't cover any of our electrical, any of our operating expenses or our personnel.
Thank you.
If we can get it closer to the jail per diem, I'd be a little happier with that number, but.
If we get to jail per diem, I'll take some. My wife would love to have five or six.
We've got them.
Not mean dogs.
We've got good dogs.
Anything else, Mr. Hankins?
Yes, sir. Just wanted to highlight Empire Vending has notified us that they have sold their vending business. We're not a big enough customer. We don't do enough volume for the company that's buying that business to take us on as a customer. So we are exploring some other options in terms of the vending. That's one of the first questions I had to deal with when I came here in 2020 was dealing with the vending. We're going to try to get you an answer and an agreement for a new operator. We just don't have anybody set yet. We do have a meeting with one tomorrow afternoon. And if you're looking for me, I've moved. I'm in the new building, so knock on the door real loud.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Hankins?
Not unless you have any questions, sir.
All right. We're going on two hours, Mr. Bear, before we get on your.
Thank you.
Report. I'm going to take a five-minute recess. Point of personal privilege. All right. I'll call us back in session on the record. And Mr. Bear, I believe it was your turn.
Yeah, just a couple of items. First items, Dr. Poole referenced the funding that we're applying for from the Virginia Opioid Abatement Authority. Would request that you all approve this memorandum of agreement between us and the Worth County Schools, basically saying that we will use these funds and they will use them to fund opioid substance prevention specialist program.
All right. Entertain a motion to approve the MOU between the board and WCPS for the opioid prevention specialist. Somebody have a motion by Mr. Terry to have a second.
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Morgan. Did I hear? Have a second by Mr. Morgan. Is there any questions or discussion on that motion? All right. Here and then we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 Aye. So approved.
And the next is our standard funding agreement. We approved the budget. We sent it to the Health Department. It usually takes them about six months to come back to us with a funding agreement, but I would request you all approve the funding agreement and authorize the electronic signature.
All right. Entertain a motion to approve the funding agreement, funding agreement and authorize the electronic signature.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Burnett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Any questions or discussion on that?
Can you explain that?
Which the.
Well, I see where the money, you know, they provide so much, we provide so much, but what's the, I just don't understand what the electronic signature and all, how it all, how does it all fit together?
Basically, the agreement is just approving the, what, they're showing what the state provides and the county provides, the 356-542. The first page of the thing they sent, they requested that the VDH and the Board of Supervisors agree to use electronic signatures. So instead of just signing these things, mailing back into them, things like that, they use an electronic signature that I go in, execute the document, and then they have the PDF version. We have the executed PDF version of that.
Okay.
It's just requesting that you all have authorized us to use electronic signature. And more and more things, I don't know if Mr. Farthing's seeing that or not, but many of our agencies are going to electronic signatures in all their documents.
For the memorandum, the electronic signature for that, right?
Right, yes.
Okay. All right. Any other questions on that motion? Did we have a motion? We had a motion on the floor.
Yes.
I'm sorry. All right. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 So approved.
At rest my, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Rest my information. It's informational items unless there's any questions on it.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Bear?
No, sir.
All right. Move on to County Attorney, Mr. Farthing.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything to report this time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Farthing. We have Buildings and Grounds Committee.
Yes, Building and Grounds Committee. Committee on January 16, 2024 recommends the following. Number one, mending and appropriations, $78,000 to 43043-443020 for the camera system upgrade project and mini blinds for the county office building.
All right. Coming from committee, it doesn't need a second. Is there any discussion on that recommendation? All right. Here and then we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 Aye. So approved.
The second item is approving the stormwater management facility maintenance agreement for the Blue Star railroad extension project.
All right. Any questions or discussion on that committee recommendation? Here and then we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I was staying.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So approved.
And that was all from the Buildings and Grounds Committee, Chairman.
All right. Thank you, sir. Move on to board time. Since you've got the microphone, Mr. Burnett, go ahead.
He's got the loud microphone.
No, but keep cursing a leg. I had two items, Chairman. One, I wish I had it on BDOTs here, but drop on road.
You're going to have to move away from that computer, that call. Sorry.
Drop on road doesn't have a roadside. It just has the state route marker outside. And I meant to bring it up on BDOTs here. And then I've gotten some calls about the phones in the treasurer's office. Sometimes they can't get through or they can't, don't have option on leaving or I don't know. It was just, and maybe, I don't know, they just moved. So maybe there was something that's, they won't be still working on it. I don't know. And that's all I have. It's actually going, Mr. Chairman.
Did you get that, Mr. Bear?
Yeah, the, and the phone issue is coming from citizens.
Yes.
Calling in. Okay.
And the roadside, that's county responsibility, correct?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. Ms. Lawson?
I have nothing at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Cook?
I have to echo off of Mr. Burnett's thing. I've gotten a couple of calls on the phone situation. Nobody answers the phone. You've got a question for the treasurer's office and some of them are still, well, one in particular said he wrote a check in November and it still hasn't been processed. So I don't, I mean, I know they're moving and all that, but I think at least have somebody answer the phone to tell people they're moving. One guy said he called down, or his wife called down and whoever answered the phone got very nasty and hateful with, or with her.
The phone system has moved. I do know that the treasurer has elected to not use the voicemail recordings. And so it is, it's up to someone to answer it if they've got someone free to answer it in the process. But I don't think it's a phone problem, but I think, as far as the system goes, but I do think they are overwhelmed with calls and by not going to a voice answering system or whatever, that's probably creating part of their issues.
The one call with the, got nasty with him. He was calling because I guess she was, his wife called and did get through, but when she got through, she was asking questions and so the lady was very hateful with her and, you know, said, my wife is a very nice lady and blah, 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 and she doesn't deserve to be talked to that way. It's like, okay, I will bring it up, but you've got to understand the treasurer doesn't work for us. So that's all I have, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cook. Mr. Morgan?
I've got a couple of things, Mr. Chairman. Do we have any update on the broadband? I've been asked about it a couple of times.
I don't have any new information. I knew that they did slow down some around the holidays and now that we had some weather, I think they probably slowed down a little bit more, but I haven't seen crews working lately. I can certainly check with Point Broadband and see where they're at and ask for a general update and provide that at your February meeting.
And I saw some articles on FHA, how they're addressing grants. Are we eligible for any of that?
Where we do not maintain roads or anything like that unless it is working through VDOT for funding eligibility, which, you know, we could check with them on it, we could apply for them or work with them on those options. So if there's, for certain things, we can certainly look at setting up a meeting with you and Mr. Schwartz or whatever. We can look at some of those funding options.
These are just general. I was just reading an article, maybe talking about all the grants and things that FHA has. I guess it's still called the FHA. Just wondering.
Yep.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Mr. Terry?
I think it is time, Mr. Chairman.
The only thing I had was what I covered when Dr. Poole was here about the Technology And it's kind of throwing me off with that, Mr. Smith here. Next item on the agenda is closed session under 2.2-3711A1, Discussion of Personnel Matters with County Administration Staff and 2.2-3711A5, Discussion of Perspective Industry for Project Artemis. And I'll entertain a motion to go in closed session.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnett. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 Aye. So approved. We're now in closed session. Have a motion to come out of closed session. Do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Morgan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're back into open session on the record. Mr. Terry, if you'll read the certification.
Whereas the Worth County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Info Act. And whereas Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Worth County Board of Supervisors, that such a meeting was conducted in conformity with the Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Worth County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening this closed meeting were heard discussed and are considered by the Worth County Board of Supervisors. And, Mr. Chairman, I'll make that a motion, sir.
All right. Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnett. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 So approved. Anything else to come before the board? Mr. Bear?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hankins?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Farthing?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Collins? Hearing no business to come before the board, we'll be adjourned.